Do I think publish your thoughts to your fellow students, right? And I think that you should be commended for that because because it's not easy to sort of put yourself out there, right? Doing this. So yeah, you're able to write and that might be something you're interested in or take photographs. But either one of those, you know, be a differing opinion, especially editorial pieces, right? So it's really, I think, that's sort of a unique challenge in that type of your learning experience. You guys should be really proud of yourself since such a young age, you're taking advantage of this opportunity and and not sort of, and, you know, pushing back from a natural reluctance to express yourself. So that's really great. And it's right in line with what we want to do, right? It's showing some agency and empowering our students. I think the editorial pieces are awesome because it like, I think, like you mentioned, right? It opens everyone's thoughts and minds, open to, you know, different perspectives that maybe they weren't thinking about before. And that's something we certainly want to incorporate into the school district. So thank you guys so much. I know I got a couple of emails about the new school building. Someone I think, I don't remember who it was, maybe Grace.
Grace Kiernan last year was writing about the new school building.
Yeah. So a few of them were writing, I got a few, like, I don't know if you want to call it interviews, but like, you know, something like that. So I saw them from time to time. So it was great. And I love that there's interest in that from the student body. And that you joined us with the, with the walk around, with the walk around. That was great when we were doing that. And that was, I mean, I think you just popped out of class for a few minutes and you started doing it. And I knew that you had interest in it. So that was awesome. And that's what we like to say. So thank you all. And thank you, Ms. Melia. And thank you Principal Mills for making this possible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just echo all that. This is great. It's thank you for doing it and for our live kids to have this very great experience. So good job everyone. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a has a little school Quebec City field trip.
Very sentient and also Chris Mills, if you want.
Aslan, hi. I'm back again. I do have to read it. So so I'm here to propose Quebec trip, a Quebec City field trip for May of this 2023. This, this, okay, so it's Thursday through Saturday, May 11th to 13th. The cultural excursion will give students a chance to practice their French, their learning in class, and to visit one of the oldest historically, historically, most rich cities in North America. Sorry, I'm sorry. So my students are looking forward to sharing experience with their peers. We do have a small group this year. I have 12 students this year that have shown interest. So are looking to go with situant middle school. I am in communication with French teachers at situant middle school and we may combine. So instead of getting a big motor coach and also to keep the cost down, we're looking at combining the trip. And we do have an experience with situant public schools. In the past, we have had, we have gone, we've had a French exchange program with Cohasset and situant high school. So we do have a long streak and a lot of the kids like, oh, I know someone that I'm on the same team. So, so I think that it's, it's going to be a good thing for us because like I said, we don't want to have really, we don't want it to be so out of reach that the kids can't afford it. And also we don't want a huge motor coach for 12 kids. They can't seem, they can't seem to find the small bus. Don't ask me why. So I did include here in the presentation, you should have that. Yeah. So I included the, the mass curriculum framework for world languages and the standards that this trip does fulfill a lot of the standards under communication, linguistics and lifelong learning. So some of the activities that are included on the trip is a history, the museum of the history of Quebec, tour of the citadel, a walking tour of the fortified city and Monterey Sea Waterfalls, a ferry across the St. Lawrence River, a fun cultural experience with the Cabana Supa, which is the maple sugar shack where the kids learn the processing of maple sugar. And it's a traditional dance and songs and food. Also, we do have a science activity in the target language. So there's a lot of activities that the kids do for three days. We keep them very busy and they enjoy it. So. For our academic expectations for students, they do have to do research on the sites to visit as well as they do keep a journal. So I have them keeping a journal and working on their language, their language skills. And usually I work on the past tense, what did I do today? What did I see? And then when they come back, they're going to report out in their journals, like, what did I see? What was the best restaurant critique on a restaurant and what's the best activity? So as far as participation, as I said, I have 12 students interested this year. I did write, the price is around $700. So with the combined trip with situant, it would keep that cost down, maybe a little less. I'll be the chaperone. It's one to 10 is the ratio. So be myself, unless I get more students, I'd want to go. It would just be myself in this situant teachers. We have gone in the past with Jump Street Tours, which is very, very great company, very reputable. We also have ACIS, but we, we haven't signed with Jump Street. Obviously we have to get a formal here tonight. But we do, probably will go with Jump Street. I think we're, the situant is going to jump on, on our, with our tour group. So I just really have had great experiences with Jump Street. We have a guide who stays with us 24/7. They're just there for us anytime. They're there like any emergency situation, which, you know, I'm not going with. But anyway, they're always there for us when we're on the trip. So I really feel very comfortable and very fine with it. And also the motor coach, we do take a motor coach and we've gone with Blue Tours. And also have had a very good experience with that company as well. We probably will be staying at either Concord or the Plaza Hotel, in case you're interested. But we're not sure which hotel yet because we're, we're still negotiating that. So anyway, the trip is, will really help our students understand what's of learning a second language. And we think to lay foundation for future trips and for future, you know, just experiences within the language, whether they travel abroad or the people that are here. So it's just a good, authentic experience. Oh, security. We do have a, after, we do have a guide that stays on the floor. We have, we have had that for, you know, every year since we've gone with them. We do have a guide from like 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM that stays on the floor. We're on the same floor, the same wing, and we do separate boys and girls. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Pleasure to speak with you, Mr. Carr.
Yeah, I love these educational opportunities. This is wonderful. I know it takes time out of your schedule. So thanks for doing it. So I'm, I'm a big fan of these things. Quebec City is such a fascinating place and it's so close to me. I realize it's such a different place, so close to your house, I'm a favorite of this trip for sure.
Great, thanks.
Sal.
I love Quebec City. How many kids do you expect from situant?
I'm not speaking to you. When Kathy had, you know, had said that only about 12 of our kids showed interest. We talked about the ramification of the trip, whether it's pricing and, you know, what are some of the ways that, some possibilities because we want to save this trip and we don't want it to be so exorbitant that families wouldn't be interested in it. I reached out to situant and as it worked out, the, we were kind of in the same boat. So they have smaller groups. So they're looking at probably 24 children. And they've got two teachers and then a principal. Last, I don't, you know, at least they reported to me, an administrator was going to chaperone as well. So it just kind of works out. 36 is perfect for the, the coach bus. It's not too full. But like Kathy said, it's not an empty bus. They were actually going with, they looked at a different tour company, same exact tour, similar hotel even, similar coach, but it was quite a bit more expensive. So as Kathy worked with the department chair in situant, you know, I think for them, it was kind of a win-win of saving their trip and saving some money for their families. And it makes it possible for us. So.
And then the ratios are correct, with three of that and one of you and 36.
Yes.
That's right.
And for our kids, we haven't spoken to them as individuals, but I know a lot of our kids play on sporting teams when they're younger. They're, you know, psycho, it's such a cohesive. So I would expect with them, it's probably see some old friends, friendships rekindled even. So it's, I think it's a neat opportunity.
It's like multicultural, classic situant and Quebec City.
It's a whole different, yeah, it's a whole different culture over there. Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I work there every day. It's wild.
They, it's wild. Exactly. Yeah.
No, I think that's really smart. It's a great solution.
Thank you. So always robust learning experience. Anytime we can get our students off campus, I'm always in favor of that. As said, anytime there's an off-campus trip, especially overnight one, I always have security concerns, which is fine. I just created those questions. I almost have them all answered except for the guard starts at 11:00 PM. Your room is going to be in the middle of our students' rooms. So I'm imagining you're, you're going to be sort of, you know, taking a couple, I don't know, strolls or something to make sure everything's right before the guard's there and there's going to be some basically, because they're going to be back at the hotel well before 11:00 PM. I know they're busy days. So I just don't, you know, and, and, and just want to make sure that our students, you know, are always monitored, right?
Absolutely. Yes. I didn't, yeah, absolutely. And we do have a 20, we have a tour guides with us from Jump Street 24/7. So they're always there. Yeah. Also is, we do, like, we have activities up until like nine o'clock. And like some to site. We're on the motor coach. They caught the coach. We, if we stay in the city, we can walk to some of the activities. But if we go anywhere, I mean, obviously we're always in that motor coach together. Yeah, we're always together.
Okay, great. And I only asked about a male because you're obviously female and you're going. So that's covered, right? So that's why I'm asking that.
And this is
A male lead student.
Right, right, right. Yeah, absolutely. And this is like my, I mean, I think I lost count of 15 years I've done this. So we have a really tight ship. We're really, you know, really, we take the doors. But we do tell
Amaya, thank you for doing this. This is, I'm on pressure for all of these. These are huge opportunities for kids that make memories that last a lifetime and they learn a lot as well. One question, is it like, you do like immersion or everyone speaks French all the time or have you tried that?
I wish. A lot of course, of course, with our tour, we have a tour guide. So we have someone represent from Jump Street, who is like with the kids and they really, once we get there as far as chaperones, they take over. So they really, and they do speak French and English. They will go back and forth, French and English with the kids. So there is, they do get French from our tour guide. We go to some of the places, if we go to like little areas in the city, some of the restaurants, they don't speak a lot of French. But we do go like, we go to, we do a scavenger hunt, even though in the supermarket, which doesn't sound very great, but it's awesome for the kids because they're actually looking at the actual, the day-to-day food activity, things that kids that they use. And they are interacting with, you know, people, with the people who work there who don't speak English. And then we do go to a mall and they, they don't speak English. The kids are like, oh, they don't speak. But once we're like right downtown to Quebec, some of the places, they're the touristy places, they do speak English. But there is, there is some French. It's not total immersion, but there is a lot of French.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, love. Thank you very much for this. Unless there's any other questions, comments to the committees, I think this is one we need to vote to approve the trip. So entertain a motion.
I'll vote you through.
Mr. McCollum moves. Take that as a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously 4 to 1. Please enjoy the trip and
Thank you for doing this.
So that concludes, concludes our invited guests. Our exec session did take a bite out of crime on our timing. But we want to, if there's any material, quick school updates, want to run through that and then move on to our regularly scheduled agenda.
I do. I have a few slides here. So first off, the announcement of the contest is that our girls soccer team won 3 to 1. So they beat Hampshire. So they're on to the state finals. Congratulations, girls soccer team. Coach Beal and get to that in a moment, but that's, that's wonderful news. So we did celebrate Veterans Day and we had many activities happening within our schools. And one of them was a, you can see the posters, this is Deer Hill. But one of them was a contest that our Deer Hill students, our fifth grade, they write an essay regarding veterans and what they're thankful for in terms of the veterans. And then they deliver it at the, and this, these were our wonderful winners, all girls this year. And they were able to present their essays, read their essays at the town festivities on Veterans Day. So congratulations, girls. And just some images of them at the, at the event. They all are taking their turn at the microphone and very proud of them and proud of all of our students taking part in this, in this contest and the teachers for supporting it, of course, for our veterans. That's wonderful. I mentioned the girls soccer. I have here, they're playing today in Hampshire, but we know they didn't win. So that, that they've had a wonderful season and are continuing with their winning ways tonight. I should mention that we have a couple of celebrated, play a lot of celebrated players. Kat Herman has committed to a school. We had a commitment ceremony here. She's also a Easter Mass All-Star, but this is Tess Barrett. Number 10 is sophomore, who is player of the year in Division Four and amongst the top players in the entire state. And along with Coach Beal, who is Division Four Coach of the Year. And, and I believe has an even higher honor bestowed upon her in terms of Coaches of the Year. She's at Easter Mass Coach of the Year, but I'll get the specific title on that and share it in my newsletter. So wonderful and very well-deserved accolades. And, you know, job not done yet, but job done in terms of being an amazing program, amazing kids and wonderfully successful, hard-earned season. Our boys soccer beat, defeated Nantucket and Abington. I went to the Abington game. It was the most thrilling soccer game that I think I've ever been to in my life. I brought two of my boys there, one who's so in love with soccer. And, you know, for him to be able to high-five Nathan Asher at the end of the game was a huge steal for him. Just pretty wonderful. But they were, were down 2-0 against Abington with about three minutes left. They stopped the time on the scoreboard. So you know, it's just being kept on the field. Kolasa came back, scored two goals, brought it to overtime and then beat them in overtime. So it's just an amazing task. And then they fell by one goal to the top-ranked team in the state, Self-Havering. So great season, everything to be proud of. Same with our field hockey team, really caught fire as they're moving through the, the season and defeated Hampshire, Suckin' Case. And I'm told had Manchester Essex sort of on the ropes and a goal was scored in the final eight seconds against them to bring it to overtime and they lost by one goal, a shootout, a penalty shootout. So that they, they should feel very proud of their accomplishments. Coach G should as well, of course, as, as should Coach Willis with the boys. And this is a, just an image of our, our field hockey. Our football, they defeated Drury and Clinton. It'll play Friday night at 5:30 at Burlington High School against St. Bernard's. And their, their hope is to return to the Super Bowl, which should be played in July again this year.
Defending champs.
Defending champs, very, very successful season. Cross-country, Roden Keery, Lizzie Blanchard and Maggie Brisney earned league all-stars. They also, I believe Maggie was MVP of the social league. And they, the whole teams, both teams competed in Division Three states and did very, very well. And just, just, that's a shadow of me taking the picture. I just realized that. And notice that's I saw on the slide. But the cheerleaders had a great season. They often don't get enough press. And I just want to, you know, know that I appreciate what, we all appreciate what they do. And they're a great team, great team of talented kids. And they are at the game. Good picture. This was a wonderful event. Principal Farrell, in conjunction with Strategic Plan, it has created a program to honor some students for being wonderful citizens and for showing leadership in their own ways at a very young age. And what she's instituted is what's called the Oh So Good Call Home, as you can only do after the Osbert principal. I'd be doing that all the time, by the way. Using the Oh So Good. And she's doing it and it's, it's wonderful. All of these students had the opportunity to call their, their families, to have a discussion with the families about, you know, what, what they did. I witnessed a couple of them do this. It's absolutely adorable. The reactions back and forth are great. Principal Farrell starts every call with, everything's fine, there's not a problem here, and then goes into the accolade. So it's, it's very warm. And this was a lunch that we had for them. I believe there was another one that, that couldn't make it. But, and I just want to thank the teachers too who nominated them. They're doing a great job here. This was a Dark Stones and I read this is a riot and also a lot, a lot of fun. He said, these are great kids. Your families are doing wonderful jobs with these kids. Corinne Rollins, who is an eighth grade student at obviously Klasik Middle School, was appointed by Principal Mills and others as our Project 351 ambassador. Project 351 is a project that started actually with Devol Patrick back some years ago now to bring a leadership representative in eighth grade from all 351 schools in Conwell. And during the Martin Luther King Day weekend, they do work together. They come together with other civic leaders and they do some great philanthropic work that they bring back to Cohasset. So we'll look to support Corinne as a community in whatever she chooses to endeavor in. Congratulations, Corinne. This is just something I wanted to bring because I know wellness has been a big part of what this team is doing. But we had Nicole Balachi and SRO Greg Taylor attend the freshman class at 2026 monthly meeting. And they discussed community wellness and safety issues this past couple of weeks. And that was, that was great to see. Some good questions there. This is the super tense Student Advisory Council. They weren't all here. Obviously Nathan was out playing soccer and a couple of others. But what a group. And I know them really well now. So they, and Josh Collins was able to be at this one. But we can see there's so much more open and we had some really lively discussions that we're going to definitely bring back to this committee at some point. Neil Nichols, the last slide, I just wanted to give a good update. Neil Nichols is the geography artist. I've actually seen him in many, in many places. He's an incredible artist and he tells stories that are so educational about the entire, in this, but this particular case, he did the United States. But I've seen him do it with the whole world. And it's captivating. Thank you, PSO, for bringing him to us. So I just wanted to share those as updates from sort of the social perspective. But it's been a lot, really wonderful couple of weeks, a lot of great things happening in the district. That's, that's really it. Great.
Well, thank you, Doc. So I was always going to get a, a pulse of what's going on in the schools and remind us why we're here. And with that, we'll move to our next agenda item, teaching and learning. And we have continuing on our update from the MCAS. I think we have a special education update from Ms. Sarwanka on
I believe I give you the power of sharing. If I haven't, I don't figure out how to do that. Doing so well on all of us today. It's like filming myself. It's very strange. A lot of bugs.
So what I would like to start with is kind of my, my usual update in terms of our data. So it's nice to see everyone tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about what's been going on in the world of special education for the month of October. So what you can see here is our new and approved slideshow to share this information with you that I introduced in September. During the month of October, you can see here at the elementary level, we had five annual review meetings. We had three what are called localization meetings, just for your benefit. That is when students moved in into town on IEPs. What we do is within the first 30 days, we spend a couple of weeks getting to know the students, implementing their IEP and then come together as a team to work with families and to make that our IEP, our own Cohasset IEP. So that's what that refers to. You can see that at the secondary level, we had seven annual review meetings and one out of district meeting for a total of 16. In terms of reevaluations, one came up and two at the elementary level during the month of October. Three came up at the secondary level for a total of four, that of course included testing and everything else that is measured with a reevaluation meeting. We had seven initial evaluation meetings at the elementary level. And if you look at the next box down, you can see the referral source. One of those came through MTSS. One of those came through early intervention. Five of those came from parent referrals, of which two students in fact qualified. And at the secondary level, we had one initial evaluation meeting, which came directly out of MTSS. So there were eight total initial evaluation meetings during the month of October. One independent evaluation was presented at the elementary level and one in an out-of-district meeting for a total of two. So in fact, at the end of the month, our total meetings were 30, oops. Okay. 30 meetings during the month of October. So it was a busy month for us. Another piece of information that I wanted to share with you.
Stop, share. Sometimes it's clunky.
I do. Thank you. I was just looking for the next one I was going to share, which I can make disappear from my pops here.
Finally, I have to open it on my screen, minimize it.
Right.
And then go back, hit share and then click on. So intuitive. Let's say that with heavy sarcasm.
Exactly what you do.
And while she's doing that, I'll just mention a couple of the little things, not little things, but things I did. Today is National ESP, our Educational Support Professional Day. So we want to make sure we thank our educational support professionals for the great work they do every day. And the field turf goes down tomorrow. So they've cleared it all out. They've brought all materials away and it starts the process of being put down. And then finally tomorrow evening, our National Honor Society is adopting new students. So that's going to be a big event. So there you go. Give you a chance to say three things I hadn't said.
Just in time. So as all of you know, one of our goals and one of our strategic plan focuses is really increasing communication and collaboration with families. And you know that last year I instituted a feedback form for families whenever IEPs go home. We took a very hard look at that feedback form this year and looked at, there were, there were actually 25 different questions and sections to it, and it was rather a long form. And we took a look at the recurring themes, where we really needed to focus and wanted to get our feedback coalesced a bit, if you will, into a one-page, 10-question document for this year. So it's going out in a much friendlier way in that it's just one page for parents to fill out. It keeps kind of the same basic strongly agree to strongly disagree, gives them the opportunity to share. The name of the chairperson, so I mean, it's an elementary or secondary, their name should they choose to. And it will come back to me with the signature pages of IEP. But it's a little bit more streamlined. It's a little bit friendlier. It, you know, it It, um, you know, it, we got a lot of really good information from the other one, and it was time for it to evolve. So we're very excited to do that, and I'll also be presenting this at our CPAC meeting this coming Monday. So, those are the things I want to share on screen for tonight. So I'm gonna stop my share. I am done with that. Um, another update that we will be having and will be added to our website very soon is, um, the process guide on our website had not been updated since 2018. Um, the teachers and I worked very hard on that over the past year and a half now, easily, and, um, had it embedded through legal counsel and approved. And that will be going up on the website and replacing the old one with some of the updates from Aspen and, um, all kinds of things. So that's really exciting and good news. Looking forward to that coming on my webpage. It will also be, um, embedded in our, um, forums for teachers to be able to go into and access. And, um, some of those links for teachers will actually be live links, either bringing them straight to Desi or to Aspen, should there be things that they wanna go and click on and look at. And we'll be doing some teacher training around that. So that's really kind of exciting. So those were kind of the updates that I was coming with. Um, one of the things that I do understand from the last meeting, which I was not, um, able to be here for at the beginning of the month, was that there were some questions around MCAS. Um, and so I did wanna talk a little bit about special education students and MCAS. Um, it's, it's, it, it's an interesting place and court to be in, I guess. A couple of things. One is that the reporting out on MCAS sometimes can be a little bit confusing, I think, because of all of the wide variety of data points and subsets on whom you can report out. So it's important to really kind of be able to look at students with, um, who are on IEPs versus students who are considered high need students, because that is a really big category, and other students can fall into that category. And it's really important to have that understanding. It's also important to understand what it is that you're looking at the MCAS in terms of the different data points that are being kind of measured and shared, you know, the growth percentages versus the questions and things like that. There's just such a vast wealth of information in there. And, um, and, and there's a lot to it. And I really, you know, appreciate everyone's interest and the deep dive that certainly Dr. Stones and I have partnered on in terms of getting into data and really analyzing data and working as a district on kind of using that data in ways that make sense and that can drive us forward as a district, you know, to really kind of benefit our students. Um, for students who are on IEPs, we recognize that certainly there already is obviously, you know, some areas of weakness that we are trying to, um, you know, address through the IEP and through the strategies and the specialized instruction that students receive. Um, MCAS is an important data point. It is one data point. And I, I really want to emphasize that, because when you are a student on an IEP, there's such a wide variety of data points for you. There are all of the data points that all of the students who are also in general education receive in terms of, you know, whether it be at the Oscar School, you know, the Dibbles, and perhaps, um, as we move up through, you know, the I Ready, and then some MCAS, and so on and so forth. And then for students on IEPs, there's all of the initial evaluation data points, all of the reevaluation data points and testing. And a really important part of it too is that current level of participation and performance in class as compared to and commensurate with their peers. And that's a very important data point also. And we really have to look at a, a good balance of all of those data points when we're diving into the data and looking at what does it truly tell us about students? And compare all of those data points to each other to make sure that we are getting a picture of the whole student. Certainly, an MCAS score is an important one, and we wanna pay careful attention to it at every grade level and really make sure that we understand that score and the variety of potential reasons that might be behind obtaining that score. Um, and it's also very important to have that short view year to year and watch students grow through it, but also the long view and recognize that as students for whom passing MCAS is a graduation requirement, we really do have, and I was talking to Principal Scott about this earlier today, a hundred percent rate in terms of students who are on IEPs and passing MCAS and being able to graduate at this point in time, which is something, um, that we are very proud of. And as, as students, I think, move through the years and increase their skills, both through the specialized instruction we can get on IEPs and through that participation as much as they can in in-class experiences to get that content knowledge and that practice in that with their peers in general education and some pushing and pull-up services and specialized instruction to strengthen that and also improve their testing skills as they go through the years. And hopefully their MCAS scores do improve as they go along to a point of graduation. Um, you know, that, that is really important. But the focus of special education really is not so much on the MCAS score as it is on their instruction and their access to that education, and they're making effective progress in their education. And certainly the MCAS story is, is one data point that we want to use in that, whether it be to compare it to other data points and get a picture of the child's floor, as perhaps a little bit of an alert sometimes to look deeper and to look at either the IP process or MTSS in helping us understand the needs that that child might have. And that is one that we do take seriously and do want to look at, but not all by itself.
Questions from the committee? Scott? Yeah, um, I'll, I will have a holdout reserved. I know that there's at least a few of the people sitting here in here for this topic, so I wanna yield my time to them so that they can ask what they've been sitting here for a while. Um, you know what? I'll, I'll, I'll do the same and see if there's any questions from, or comments from fellow.
Okay, so I guess we'll go. Uh, my name is Melissa McDeona, 306 Pharaoh Lane. Um, I actually thought Mrs. Sarwanka's update was gonna be a follow-on from the November second meeting, where we talked about doing a deep dive on those students that had very, very low growth percentages. And what we were gonna do specifically, there was a lot of talk about what we would look at and plans to develop. So I thought this was gonna be more of the district's approach. But it doesn't sound like we're there yet. So I guess, since I'm limited to three questions, my first is, when are we gonna do that? What are, what is our plan to look at those students? What is the timeline? How is the school committee gonna hold the students and the administration responsible for elevating those scores? Um, I guess I'll stop there and you can just keep going after that.
Um, and certainly Dr. Stones and I...
Yeah. So I think, um, I think part of it is, some of it's so individualized, and it's in, in particular students, right? So we wouldn't necessarily have a broad plan around student growth, because it's very specific to students. So, um, so those plans would be individual with parents and students. But overall, some of the things that we're doing, um, so at the elementary level, Deer Hill in particular, we are taking, we look at the students' MCAS scores. We take that, and then we look at the other data and then create plans for those students. So it could be that they're in, um, with the reading or math specialist, and they've already been identified, um, prior to. Or it could be that the MCAS gives us a flag to say, "Okay, let's look at that student." Uh, it could be that, um, they aren't making progress within that, and they move to the MTSS process into the child study. And that could be students on an IEP, um, because it could be that they have, um, their learning disability in reading, and that's where they have been concentrated, but their MCAS scores are showing us that their math isn't where it should be. So they're gonna go through that MTSS process, which then could, people, um, based on what those students' needs are. Is that what you're looking for when you're asking this question?
Ideally, yes.
Yeah, okay.
When, like, one second?
That's happening now. That's been happening. So that's been happening. That happens as soon as kids even enter, even before we see MCAS scores. We look at students in the spring. We look at what their needs are, so we'll prepare for them in the fall. And then when our new assessments come in, that happens. So this will be...
Yeah, maybe, um, it would be good to just outline, like, we, we have some scores, obviously, that were not, that were, that concerned us. And we are, how are we approaching this, I guess, from a holistic sense, based on trends? And then on a particular individual student sense, based on those who are partially meeting or, or less. Uh, so I think i- is that, that concerning?
Yeah, I mean, I think you have very, you are very concerned parents here today, but what about the parents that don't follow these meetings? How are they being alerted that they have a low-risk student that needs something?
So that's great. That's a great question. But I think if, if Dr. Stones could, if you could go out and talk about, like, the fact that we are looking at all of these students at the MTSS level, looking at it, connecting it with other data points, um, how, how we're going about, about doing that. And then maybe some examples of, um, what we're doing with, like, say, the narrative essay, um, uh, which clearly we have some scores that, you know, we, we weren't happy with, uh, and how we're approaching that, something all students. Um, and, you know, in terms of how people know this, I mean, obviously, if there are individual needs that require MTSS intervention, you'll be communicated in, in regards to that. Obviously, um, Mrs. Sarwanka's looking at MCAS as a data point in conjunction with what is on a student's IEP. And what kind of services are happening in the IEP. If something's jumping out and needs to be more there, you could, you could determine to be giving the IEP team if that data point matched with other data points.
Exactly.
We're always open for conversations about any data point, particularly MCAS, as it relates to students who are achieving and not achieving. But we're doing a lot to work with staff to make sure that they understand, um, what they need to do based on the data. And we're providing that professional development. So there's a lot of layers to this, and we've been updating some of that, and if not, um, all of it, in newsletters and in other ways. But what you're saying is, is I'm hearing it. I want you to know that. And I think that would be, uh, something that maybe we can update a little more specifically as it relates to MCAS. So maybe if you could speak a little bit about those measures, I think that might help if folks who are watching, and then, of course, our, our folks who are here, a little bit more of a, of a, of an idea of how we're targeting, um, data points in the MCAS.
So, so what we've been doing is breaking down the MCAS, and I can talk about that in November second a bit. So I'm meeting with, and have met, um, with schools and departments to look at specifically what standards have we, um, have we done really well in? Because it's important to know what we've done well in and replicate it possible. And then also, where are we falling short, um, when it comes to just an item analysis and looking for that? So I'm working with reading and math specialists also and science to really look at those, um, trends, three through ten, to kind of say, "Okay, what's happening?" So they're working behind the scenes, looking and tabulating all of that, so that we can look for those trends and patterns overall. So when we're looking at our education for our students, what areas do we need to target on? That's a one year, but it's also one tool, because, you know, a trend and pattern happens over time. So that's something we wanna keep monitoring. Um, as for, um, the writing piece, because that has been, um, across the state, is, was really, um, challenging. Um, the Deer Hill School looked into what exactly was happening with that. So they actually changed their prompts for their writing assessment this year to address that. Um, and one in particular, the third grade level, students, um, were required to finish a story. A lot of times, they just analyzed it and didn't understand. So now they're working on those narrative pieces and really targeting what they were seeing in the MCAS, um, that they didn't, that they actually didn't get. So, um, so the third, fourth, and fifth grade writing prompt for it right now was adjusted to address that, so then they can work with the students, I'm growing those pieces. There's some other fundamental pieces around writing that happens, even simple things like the technology side of it, um, that the boxes... Sometimes students don't understand those pieces, and they, they stop writing. There's just little things like that. Um, but that's less academic, but it does impact, right? So there's things that we're looking at to make sure, um, that they understand those pieces. Um, and then as we dive into the data with the departments, we will learn more about that. In addition, um, the Department of Ed just sent out their training modules for MCAS, and one of them is a webinar on writing and what the expectations are. So a bunch of us are jumping on that to see, um, what's gonna hap- what, what they're saying. So we're clear on what those expectations are, so that'll directly impact our instruction. Um, and then along the writing, we've also talked to all the departments around increasing writing across content areas, because it isn't just in ELA. Um, it is in all content areas, um, that we can show our students can write, can, um, share their thoughts, show their thinking. So, um, that's directly impacting our instruction.
Um, and in all of these meetings too, um, we have our department heads, and teachers are coming together and analyzing the data. We're really doing all of those things. The team cares, like, especially the teaching teachers.
Um, and then really more specifically, um, there is small group instruction happening. We have at the middle school, we have a reading specialist, and then we have the math specialist. So they use that MCAS data to help possibly put students into those areas, uh, into those support groups. Um, but they do use other data too, to make sure that, um, that they have a well-rounded picture of that student, so... So they're specifically targeting those areas for those students. So I, I hope that helps a little bit to understand where we're at around the analysis.
Oh, well, listen, go ahead. I have a question.
Follow-up. Um, so, so I understand what you're saying. Um, but I feel like kind of along the vein of communication and making sure that we're very clear about what's happening this year. Um, to me, this feels a lot like, uh, when we're talking about having interventionists hold kids, and then we really push to have communication sent out to say, "No, you're not the MTSS process yet, but your child's gonna be working with a math specialist or the reading specialist." As a mom and school committee member and teacher, I feel like this is an area that it would make me feel more comfortable. It says, "Okay, you've received your report at home. We see that your child is not meeting in this area or partially meeting in this area. That, that is a concern to us, and we are going to start intervention in this way." You know, like, if, you know, I know that some children are receiving intervention or some sort of support because of benchmark stuff. But, or maybe if those two data points both align, yeah, beginning of your benchmarks and MCAS are showing us together that there's an area of concern. Like, this is an area where we could err on the side of over-communication and specifically mentioning it's because of not just I Ready or Dibbles, but also, um, this MCAS score is showing, it's starting to show a pattern, you know?
Sure. And then I, right. So I guess, are you asking if, if, let's say, a student had, um, partially meeting in, in their MCAS, but every other assessment, they're exactly where they need to be? Are you, are you asking that?
I guess I just want some acknowledgement beyond the state report that says, like, "We see this, and we are using this to do a small group during math," or "The math specialist is going to do it." I think so often, okay, so I look at a lot of MCAS data too. So often, when I look at the data of students with whom I work in reading, every single person who didn't meet, it makes sense, because we are working our butts off on reading, and they're not quite there yet. And we're gonna continue to work on it. But I feel like it would be helpful language in that communication that says, "Your child is going to be working with the reading specialist, not only because of what we're seeing at school, but also this other data point." It just feels like that would be a part of, like, helpful communication that makes people feel like it's being noticed. And if it is noticed, you're saying it's noticed, but I also want it down in writing to acknowledge it's being noticed. Seth?
It would demonstrate responsiveness on the part of the district. Now, you're, what you're, what you're asking is very, I think, pertinent question in that, well, if they're forming in every other, uh, evaluation tool, would MCAS alone trigger that? To me, the answer is yes. And the reason for that is because... To me, the answer is yes. And the reason for that is because it's a critical valuation tool to the average parent, right? So, you know, even the parents that are present today are, I would qualify not the average parents, because they're very well-versed in education issues. And, and so, but like, parents that are more like me, if I did not serve in this committee, I would be looking at MCAS like, that's like a critical data point. And like, you receive the I-ready, you receive other assessment material. You're like, oh, this almost seems like school-specific, like it's part of the curriculum and like, okay, they're working up. But when you get MCAS, it's that statewide, very highly published and publicized, you know, evaluation tool. And so if your kid is underperforming, or your student, I should say, is underperforming, and that you're, you are, you are very, very concerned. So I think it's not something that I think is necessarily expected. But when Mrs. St. Onge just brought that point up, I think it would be really great if it is acknowledged by the district. So they're looking at it. And then they're simultaneously getting a letter saying, hey, we're on this. We see this. You needn't worry. We are on it, and we're working with your students, and we'll follow up in a certain amount of time. So that, I think the answer to your question to me is yes.
So I know that it's probably not specific when they put students in groups and things like that. And I know teachers are speaking with parents. But I see your point around something that's in writing.
I don't think it's, like I said, I don't think that's to be expected, but it could be one of these things where it might put us, you know, on a, on a, on a, on a higher level than, than other districts. And I, that's what I'd like to see in our district, doing something like, you know, maybe a step better than others.
It's just a really, it just feels like proactive communication that because we are a small district, could be achievable. I think I've seen a shift this year in, you know, like intervention communication, and we talked a lot about that. It just, it feels to me like we should be able to make that happen. And, and I think a lot of times we have issues and people are like, I don't know where to go. I'm gonna go to the superintendent or kind of come to this meeting. Could we have addressed people earlier and proactively opened a line of communication with a classroom teacher, principal, interventionist? And not let people sit home and stew. When we're not hearing from people, it doesn't mean they're not worried. Just means they don't really know what to say or if they should say something. And I think probably everyone in this room has been in that boat at some point. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. Am I worried? Am I not worried? Should I be worried? I just think being proactive about it is gonna be a really helpful.
That's just one idea.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I know, because we, you know, I did talk with Principal Sullivan and talked about how that communicated. And so there was, you know, really about the conversation happening. You know, and especially in those conferences and saying, okay, here's the MCAS data. Here's the I-ready data. Here's this, here's that. Yep, we see this right here. But when I look here, and then I look over here at all this other data, it's not showing up here. I'm not, doesn't mean I'm not watching, and that that child isn't on my radar. Child absolutely on my radar because of their MCAS. And we'll continue to focus, you know, keep that in the back of our minds. But if the child is solid in all areas, then, then, then they're gonna be watched. If the child is showing they are not, then they're, they're put into all these groups. And that's just so, but it's not probably maybe said explicitly because of the MCAS, because of the I-ready. Like, there's no, I don't.
The, the students are whom, yeah, there's also correlating data, whether it be performance in classroom measure peers or some of the other tests that we do, kind of matches up with the MCAS. And they struggle with MTSS. There's a space on those MTSS letters to list out and should clearly list out, I believe, then that, you know, the concerns are as a result of MCAS test score, this test score, and performance in class. And then those interventions go into place. And I'm wondering if, you know, that's kind of what you're talking about.
I mean, I think that we can probably, like, hash out the details of what you're talking. I, I feel like we've kind of used service with the family members. And like, I, I want to make sure that they're getting valuable experience from this. So I, I love the point. I wanna further.
Yeah. I was hoping that that might help you all and might
It probably did.
With what you are.
It probably did, but you only answered one question. That's why I was getting.
Trying to like use a mom senses out here, you know?
And also, you know, we'd like to serve you well. What would you like to see? That would be a question that would be nice to hear, because we're, we're definitely looking at trends, patterns, individual students. We're trying to support them through their IEPs if they have an IEP. We're looking at correlating data points. We're looking at data points with the MCAS that, that seem to be an aberration. We're looking at why is that the case? We're willing to communicate. We want to communicate. We want your input. Love that you hear. What would you like to see? Because I think that'd be really helpful.
Personally, I think it would be the implementation or the effectiveness of it. Like, a lot of what we talked about here is, this would be amazing to have. Yeah, let's talk about that next meeting. Yep, we're gonna talk about that next, like, where does the rubber hit the road? So we, MCAS results came out in July, and we've done this. We have correlating data on I-ready, on DIBELS, and all these things, like. So where is it? Where, where are these kids hiding? And what are we doing about it? Like, that's where I feel like we're disconnected.
So we are addressing. So, but I guess the question is, what would you like to see from us that shows you that we're addressing?
Well, as a parent of probably a high-risk student, like, nobody's contacting me about it.
About what?
About my child at risk.
About your child's MCAS score?
About that and the correlating data. Like, as a parent, I put it together and I brought it to you guys. And I'm a concerned parent that's very vocal. So, like, where is the addressment of my student? And then if I wasn't as vocal, would that have come?
So, so I would say yes. We are addressing every, because we're looking at it through the lens of overarching patterns. We're addressing every kid, because remember, MCAS is very much an examination to show how a district is doing with the standards. What are we, what are we hitting? What are we not hitting? How, and so we're addressing it in that way. But we're also looking at it individually. Every single student that is partially meeting or less, we are addressing through, through our MTSS system. And we're looking to see the correlating data points with those kids. Many of them are getting help, are getting the help they need. But the question is, if, and this is what we've been discussing, if there's an outlier. So if your, if your child, or if there's a child who has an individual educational program and those things are being addressed, and it's very much in line with that, it's being addressed. If there's an outlier, are we addressing that outlined data point with communication? That's what I'm hearing, because I think all the rest of it, I, I would say that we're very clearly doing that through MTSS. Those, those students who are struggling on data points are getting, you're getting communication via letters. You're getting communication via phone calls. We're also making sure that we're communicating with those sort of non-MTSS letters. I think a lot because of Mrs. St. Onge's work in, in this, in these meetings, that we're doing that better. As, as you said, we're, we're definitely identifying and communicating better in that way. And then along comes MCAS data. So all of those things are happening. The MCAS, MCAS is a core, just an MCAS. The MCAS is a correlating data point, and that goes into our letters and into our interventions. So I guess the question is, and what we seem to be hitting is a sore point here, is if you do have an outlier where the MCAS is just sitting out there. We've discussed this. We had discussions as a, as a leadership team about how we're gonna address those. In 10th grade, you know, there are plans that are set for students. There's, you know, there's forums we use to try to help students who, who didn't succeed. There's a plan that we have to kind of base off of. Those students have to repeat, although we don't have a lot of those in Cohasset, so they have to repeat tests. We don't have that requirement below 10th grade. But again, we feel like we are doing plans. We are doing these, we are, we are creating plans for kids who are struggling. And we're using multiple data points. MCAS is one of them. So again, MCAS, we're addressing it as you're supposed to. Trends and patterns, instruction in the classroom, professional development. We've been highlighting that for a long time. But individually, how are we addressing and how are we communicating to families whose child did not succeed on MCAS? And I would say we are, because we're helping out students in these other ways. But if there's, if it's a unique data point, are we communicating? And I would say probably not as well as maybe we can. So that's something that I can, I can see. But i- in terms of, you know, what you're asking for, I, I feel like we're doing it. And I don't need to be defensive. I'm just trying to outline, outline what we're doing to try to support a little bit of what Dr. Stone's and Mrs. Solanco are saying.
Right. And I would say, as a parent, and maybe these guys can chime in, we don't feel that.
So how can we do it better? What would you like to hear, I guess, is the question?
Well, like you're saying, all these letters are going home. All of this is happening. I, I don't think that's the case. I've never gotten a phone call. Like, my daughter is in low growth, it's on my P, and she's in this math intervention group that is not MTSS. She's not in the MTSS system. She, the intervention group focuses on pre-teaching, not on the MCAS results. So I, Barbara and I were meeting about this Monday. We don't have to talk specifically about my case, but I, I think there's also a lot of fifth-grade parents here. So fifth grade has 62 students partially meeting or not meeting. Less than 30 of those are high-risk. So that's over 30 students in the fifth grade for both ELA and math. So are you telling me those other 30 students are in MTSS?
So what's happening?
Again, that's one data point.
Right. So, so, so as one data point, it doesn't mean necessarily that they're all in a small group. Because if we're seeing such a large, a large group that's partially meaning or not meaning, we gotta look at the core instruction that's happening. And so that's being addressed also. So it's not just that it's small group instruction. We're actually looking at all teaching learning that's happening. So, so there's overall things that are happening with our instruction based on, not just the MCAS, because we probably have some data that we could support depending on what we're looking at, right? I ready to give so, so many other assessments that we're looking at. So we are targeting that in our core instruction. And then on top of that, teachers always are pulling small group instruction within their classes based on what they see and what their assessments tell them. That's a constant that's happening. And so.
Doing better and communicating.
Right, right. And so I think it becomes part of their daily instructional. And so, so it is happening. And at the middle school, you're absolutely right. There are intervention groups happening. And students don't necessarily have to be in the child's study for that. They look at data and they, they put kids in those for proactive reasons, because the student is showing that they need support in that area. And it is, there is pre-teaching, but there's also very individualized instruction that happens along with that. Because sometimes they need some pre-teaching, but sometimes they need to secure some shoring up of skills that they didn't quite grasp. So it's very individualized. Every time they're, they're working specifically with the students and their needs. And so that's happening in reading also at the middle school. And then at the high school, Dr. Stone was already talking about those educational, it's an educational provision. Pieces that we have to do for those students, so.
And it's really important when we look at MCAS data too, that we look at it through both times. We have to look at it through that child lens. What is that score? What is that growth percentile? What does that say about the child? We also have to look at it in terms of what is the design of the MCAS. And it is for us to kind of look at our curriculum, look at what, and sometimes look at what those MCAS questions are. Sometimes MCAS will throw up the questions because it was, they were skewed and things like that. They're doing real data, in fact. But then also look at, you know, what are the curriculum points that they are looking at as important? Do they match those patterns year after year? And is our curriculum and our instruction also matching that? So we have to look at ourselves as well.
So if I can, if I can jump in, because I think, I think I, I, maybe I'm on, on a different planet than everyone else. But I, I, I thought, I thought we were gonna take the conversation slightly different direction, and maybe this is what Ms. McDonald is getting at as well. So we, we talked about the MCAS results last meeting. And I'll just, you know, four, 4% of our fifth-grade classes I need is meeting or exceeding expectations. These 96% are not. I thought tonight we would hear, like, if someone said, Lance, your house is on fire, what are you gonna do? I'd say, well, I'm gonna get some water. I'm gonna pour it out. I mean, I have a specific action plan. I wouldn't say, well, you know, you have to look at the fire in a different way. Is it smoldering? Is it, no, I, like, so what I wanted to hear is some specific action items of, of what are we gonna do about this for fifth grade? This 30 for fourth grade, this 38 for, for, for third grade.
So that might be my fault, because I didn't communicate, I didn't realize that's what you wanted. I thought we were answering specifically more generally, kind of a follow-up from, I believe it was Mrs. McDonald's question about how are we approaching our students who are in a, a special education category? How, how are we approaching them? And how are we looking at the data that we're seeing on the MCAS? And how are we kind of getting, gathering together to support that, those students? And I also thought that we would do a little more kind of overview of, as I pointed to, pointed out to you, sort of some of the ways we're approaching this in a trend specific. I didn't know that we were to be, to be looking at the specific data points. And like, every single, because you did talk about action, action steps.
So all the things that we're doing. I guess I, I need maybe some clarification on exactly what.
Maybe bring you to light. I guess then we, we had, you made a slide with lots of different things. But what, what it didn't bring to life for me anyway, as a consumer, is, you know, hey, look, we've got this, this problem here where we've got 4%, here's, here's how we're going to address that issue. You know, a lot of what we talk about is very generic themes. You know, we're, we're doing more professional development. We are working with our teachers. We're focusing on it together. These are great efforts, but they don't. And, and if it's not being, also, we've got communication, where if it's, people aren't getting letters, people aren't seeing the results in, in their homes from the community. That's, that's an issue itself. But, you know, actually saying, so, we looked at grade five, 4%. So here's something we're doing with that class, because this is like, the, you know, is it, is there something that's more? I guess what we're looking for is, is, at least what I'm looking for is, you know, what are, this is a data point. What are we doing to address it? Or what did we consider doing and then reject? I just, it feels like there's a, there's a gap where we haven't responded to. And then, and I think that's what the committee was talking about last week. So that, maybe I wasn't clear and said the general.
Granular look at the.
So we're, so we're literally taking the data, analyzing it, and then bringing it back to the classroom and saying, okay, so this is what we need to address. So these standards, these were not met with proficiency. So this has to be.
Even that, I mean, like, and maybe it's just giving a couple of examples of, of like, so you say, we're bringing this back to the classroom, saying this standard is a medicine. That is, it's kind of nebulous to me. So it's like saying, hey, look, we learned that our kids are having a, a writing issue. So we went back to a classroom saying, hey, you need to incorporate these three stories. I think your example last week about the writing prompt that you brought up again today. We saw we didn't do well in the area of writing. So we are now doing new writing prompts. And. Yeah, so, so some real, and I, I think people are looking for some, or at least I would like to see some concrete examples, especially in the, in the special education scenario of what, and, and I'm not trying to get into individual student cases, but like, you know, are there things that are we, you mentioned, Dr. Stone's looking at our core curriculum. Are there things in our student service that we're looking at? Saying, hey, maybe this part isn't working. Maybe there are things we need to reexamine. You know, I just, I think we're, we're, we're looking for some, you know, specific direction and examples of, of what we're, of what the district's reaction is to some of the stuff, if that makes sense.
And in order to provide those, you may very well need more time than what we've been given so far, right? But there may be a meeting in the early spring semester, for lack of a better phrase, where you present that, the specific, like, the writing prompt example, right? So I echo Mr. Dye's position, like, I am very concerned about our districts and past scores. It's one data point, but like I said at the last meeting, it's, it's, it's an important one. And it's an important one to the average parent like myself. So we need to, we need to, I care what you say, sir. I, we, we need to basically communicate that concern effectively, which I think we're starting to do. But I think that we, we identified areas where we can improve there. And then we need to create an action plan and then publish that action plan to families. That's exactly what McDonald's driving at, like, when she says, where's the rubber meet the road? What are you going to do about the scores? And what exactly are you doing? And when is it being done?
So maybe what we need to do is have discussions about the format of the action plan. Because I think we are presenting actions. I think Dr. Stone's last meeting presented a whole series of actions that we're doing. So perhaps it's more granular to particular standards. And, and we can do that. I have done that when I did presentations in the past. So it was Dr. Stone's. We didn't do that this, that specifically. So, you know, we can go back and do that. It's just, you know.
I mean, certainly can, you know.
That's what we're doing in, in our, in our meetings with our, our staff.
So, and I think, I mean, maybe trying to put a framework on it, what we're looking for is, you know, we know we need to improve. So we need, as a committee, some ways to, you know, see milestones and goals and things. and things that we can hold accountable to the district. So that we can show we're progressing. And if we're not progressing, we don't understand why and what we need to do to, to, to remedy it. And, you know, I, I, and like, you're, you're, you're saying exactly the things, and we're doing the things we should do. More professional development, getting back classroom feedback. These are things. But without, with just saying we're doing more professional development without giving us some metrics or some key, key performance indicators, there's no way we can go back to the community and say, yes, we've got it, because here are the five things we did. We can't, you know, just going back and saying, you know, ah, the, the test is one data point and we're looking at it holistically and we're doing a review. Like, that's, that's great, and I know, and I trust that you're doing the right thing. But it, it's hard for parents to internalize that without getting some, you know, our, our, I guess we're really asking for some key performance indicators, some ways for us to be able to hold accountable that we are moving forward, if that makes sense.
And I think maybe, like, I know you would ask what we want and, and maybe we're just not saying, we're saying the same thing, but maybe differently. But to use Lance's analogy, like, it sounds to the parents that Lance's house is on fire and you guys have watched it burn and are gonna go back and say, just, I know it sounds terrible. Just give me one second. You're gonna, you're gonna say, like, you know, we evaluated the type of wood in the house. That's why it went up so fast. But we've gone back and we've talked to the firefighters and this is how we're gonna change how we respond to fires. And we're saying, our house is on fire. How are you calling in different towns to come and pour water on it? Like, I, I just feel like we're, we're talking about the immediacy of our children and you're talking about, well, we're changing our curriculum and how we're teaching teachers to teach. But what about the houses that are currently burning?
Right, so one example is, so we have our I-ready data. When we run those reports, there are specific interventions that are built in that teachers then take and do small group instruction to support students. So there are things that I can create a plan.
So, so we're hearing, so, so we're, so I think the dive, the dive right now is to go more specific with the interventions that we're performing for your students. Keeping in mind that, I'm gonna say it, MCAS is a data point, everyone. It's a data point. And it does talk about standards and it does, it is set to try to get districts to look at our instruction holistically. It's not set to create individual plans for individual students alone. There are other data points you use to create those plans. So I just want to be really clear with that. Um, but what I'm hearing, and I'm seeing in analogies about fires, is there's a disconnect between the work we're doing on the floor and what you are hearing us tell you about what we're doing on the floor. So what, what I would suggest is that maybe I listen better when you talk to me next time. And I, I specifically work with Barbara, and I'll take, I'll take ownership of this. I specifically work, uh, with Barbara and Leslie to create a presentation that shows you specifically where we're falling short in the standards, okay? And, and what we're doing on each of those to address that on the ground floor. That we can do, because that's easy, because we're doing it. The individual student conundrum, and I will say it that way, is that we're also looking at individual students through MTSS who are partially meeting or, or less. And we're looking at, what are we doing for them right now? And, and the way we're doing that is, we're looking at, are there other data points that show that this student is falling short in the same areas that MCAS is telling us they're falling short in? Are we addressing that? And if we are, then perhaps that's exactly, we're addressing the right thing, is that, that the problem is there and we're addressing it. Then there are the students who, you know, they're doing, and I don't think there are a lot of these, who are doing well on everything else, but didn't do well on MCAS. I don't think that's a huge amount of people. Are we addressing those kids? And, and I would say probably not as explicitly as you might want, based on what you've expressed today. And I, I get that. But I, I think we're looking at it and we're certainly looking at that, at that point as something serious. But I want to go back to what I said initially. MCAS is, does not, it's not the end of the world. It doesn't, it doesn't give us everything. And I'm not saying we shouldn't be responsible for it. We need to be, but we need to look at it in conjunction with other data points. What it's telling us is that we got some work, and it's telling a lot of districts. We got some work to do in our core instruction, and we're doing that. So we'll, we'll be more granular with the, a presentation.
I think this just strikes me more as a communication issue than an MCAS issue. And I just think that we should let the other people in the audience offer ideas, because that's what we asked for, right? And I appreciate everything you said. No, no, I appreciate everything you said. But it's also like eight twenty, and we have guests here. And let them speak.
And we do have a couple of other questions.
Oh, yeah.
We have a couple of questions.
Hi, I'm Allison Bryan, forty-four Houne Road. Um, and just to give a little bit of background, I got my MCAS scores at my house and I promptly tucked them away because I sort of didn't really care about them. And then, as I logged on last week, I was pulling them back out because there were some things that were talked about that were, um, obviously concerning. And I will say that I'm a fifth grade parent. Well, I'm, I'm a fifth grader in the data parent. And now I have a sixth grader, and so now they move schools, um, which also is a concern. And the grade is like, kind of moving all over the place. So it's, you know, very, I think, for my household, I'd say. But, um, you know, something that really worked well last year as a fifth grade parent, and I've heard it from a lot of parents, was when I went in for conferences and the teacher said multiplication tables. None of the fifth graders know multiplication tables. And, you know, all of a sudden, like, parents knew, oh, my gosh, let's be practicing this stuff at home. So the grade level standards, sort of to your point, Dr. Sullivan, are posted on the JESSY website. And we can all see those. Many of us probably accessed them during COVID, hoping that we could, like, do our part to try to fill in those gaps. But we don't know now which, which of those standards, which of those standards, um, you know, the group are missing. You know, so I feel like that's part of what you're talking about. And it almost seems like, um, you know, when our kids have certain big projects, uh, they have a group that they need to follow. And that would be something that perhaps could be helpful in terms of really seeing kind of what the district is doing. That the district has their group. I know that there are pieces of this, um, but it kind of really needs to come together, if you like. So, um, you know, we do have parents in the community who are involved, who want to pitch in. We have no idea what our sixth graders are missing. I mean, honestly, it feels like just about everything based off these scores. But we don't know where to start, too. And so if we are partnered with, like we were last year, no fifth graders know the multiplication tables, then we know at home, too, different pockets that we, as parents, can. So that, that just is one suggestion.
Any comments, the person or online?
Couple here. This is transportation. So here's one, uh, Elizabeth Fraser, um, twenty-seven Windy Hill Road. There are many, many students who have been on IETs for many years in this district who continue to struggle. The gap is widening between these students and their peers. And they have a loss of confidence from having never passed the MCAS. This is very scary because it leaves social networks. I think this is just a change. It is a change to the elementary school curriculum. This is the core problem that needs seriously be addressed.
How they adjust some of the curriculum. Notably, our.
We are, we, so we have.
Math and ELLA.
Right, and then ELLA, right.
So I agree, but I agree with that.
Yep. Absolutely.
Last, last couple of years.
Oh, I think, accident. Oh, no. Okay, and then, um, Megan. Barry, okay, she has two comments. All right, this one is related to this. Okay, just want to make sure. Sorry. All right, Megan Berry, eleven Tad Lane. As a parent of a now sixth grader, the class has been in the fifth grade. Trust results, I can attest that they, they never had a normal year, Dear Hill. Their third grade was cut short, their fourth grade was mostly remote, and then the classes were split apart in March for spacing distances, the only class in class. And then at fifth grade, a teacher left mid-year. I think the entire sixth grade, special ed or not, could use some academic help on the ELLA side. Yep, yeah, those, those things absolutely happened. And, um, I think it was in, you know, the Department of Ed. That was a lot of what they talked about, not just specifically the cohesive, but across the state, um, around, um, you know, what we were seeing and what are we gonna do? And it's gonna take us some time to, to, to build it all back. Was a period of time where kids, um, had learning losses because we were in it. So absolutely, it's true. So we're gonna work toward that. That's it for right now. There's another one, but transportation later.
I think just to piggyback off of that, you know, there is MCAS data. I'm not a numbers girl. Perhaps it's going to be better than I can, but, um, there is something unique to Cohasset that is going on. Because if you look at the number of kids in that grade in particular, who are needing or exceeding, no, hang on, blows us out of the water. That grade has the same, you know, consequences since our students did. So what's different?
And that's where I feel like, as a parent, if the district had said as part of that MCAS meeting, you know, we've looked at everything. We see this current sixth grade is in real trouble and this is what we're doing specific to them, to lift them up. Then I think it gives parents comfort, but we don't hear that. And so we're left to our own devices to say, so show us what you're doing. And that's where I think whether it's communication or action, I just think something needs to improve. I, I, I think that this sixth grade is in real trouble. And when you get to tenth grade, they have to pass MCAS. And so how are we gonna get them there?
Any other comments, questions? I think that probably closes out this, this agenda.
Thank you.
So that does, um, a special education update and some of the ongoing work. Does that also cover academic initiatives and updates?
I think it kind of included. There was just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. So I, I wanted just to correct some of my data, um, real quickly. Oh, you just did.
I hear you.
I am. Just a couple of quick things. So there was a question around, um, some data. So, uh, I had the wrong, um, three ten. Uh, and what happened was I pulled it off of the district profile page rather than the high school page. Um, and so it's slightly different because the district page has out of district Cohasset. So it has out of district scores on there. So then I went to the Cohasset page and that was that. So I apologize for that. I grabbed it on the wrong spot. Um, and then the other issue, um, was, um, right in here around, um, the grade three through eight. Remember you asking that question? So what I did was I grabbed it off the, the school site. So Dear Hill, if you look three through eight at Dear Hill, it all, when it says three through eight, it's only giving you the score for those three grades. And then if you do the middle school, that three through eight, even though so it says grade three through eight, it gives you the score for just the six, seven, and eight. So I grabbed it wrong instead of grabbing it from the district. That made sense. So I had to fix that. Uh, and so, and that was, um, that was just my issue. And that was why you weren't getting the right numbers, was because we're not realizing, pulling them from two, and not realizing that I was doing that. Um, and then.
You figured it out right after me.
I did, I did. So here it is again, too, where I made that mistake. So anyway, I just wanted to apologize for grabbing the wrong, um, data and figuring that all out. So that was it. But yeah, I kind of, you know, for the MCAS.
Great, thank you. Was that a question or you?
A question. Um, actually, two. One is just to kind of follow up on what we're hearing from the audience in our conversation. Feel like it makes sense to establish kind of a timeline or an action item of saying, yes, we are going to kind of communicate to the community or the people or whatever. Here are the standards where we fell short. Here's what you can target at home. Here's how we can be, you know, working together. I know, you know, from a self-shore math council perspective, fact fluency is a problem, um, across the board, across towns, across socioeconomic levels and everything. So, um, I mean, your teachers are right. It's not other facts. It is true. Addition, subtraction, multiplication, division, all of them work on us. We do as much as we can. And it's not a bunch of the truth, right? Um, so I feel like, say, yes, fact fluency is an issue. Like, where, what are some other standards? Can we be targeting fractions, which is almost always an issue? Um, you know, what can we be targeting on a good, family-friendly scale? Assuming we are not all math teachers or teachers, right? Um, so communicating that out in a user-friendly way would be a good step. Um, I'm also curious about your survey. Is it only on paper? Your family satisfaction survey?
Yes, it is.
Is that a legal issue?
It goes.
Like, can it be a Google form? Because somebody who hates filling out surveys on paper.
Right. So it goes, I was with the signature pages. It needs to be physically signed anyway. And then it comes back with it and it gives it more anonymity than if it were a Google form. It's from somebody's address, email address.
Can we, like, give that as an option? It's possible. Okay, just consider it, you know, you know, it's twenty twenty-two. All right, that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. All right, I think that'll close out our, um, so the comments, close out teaching learning. We'll move to, uh, budget resources and governance. It's Owen, or is yours?
Thank you.
You're a co-host.
So I'll make it quick, because I know we've got a bunch of other stuff on the agenda. Um, not a lot can be changed. This is gonna be the budget report for the month of October. As of October thirty-first, um, we've expended five point two million out of my twenty-two million dollar budget, um, which is about thirty-two percent. Moving my own target as usual. Um, we've encumbered our supply of materials and purchase orders to be on one point eight. One point eight million, um, remaining balance is fifteen million, one hundred and seventy-eight, which obviously be expended throughout the year, um, the things that are not in coverage, such as salaries, et cetera. Nothing, no, no, there is a concern on that one. Um, spent tuitions, we're budgeted at one point one four nine. Um, and I'm currently incumbent on our purchase orders last, last month. Um, it was positive to see that I spent, it's right on target. We, um, we walk over any area, unfortunately, and that comes along, it's a fluid, um, it's a fluid, um, department, we'll say. Um, so now we're showing, uh, a deficit of about sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that was due to a transfer of a student. They went from a collaborative to a private, a private school. Um, obviously, private schools are much more expensive. Um, so obviously, follow that. And I just give you an update of the individual schools and, and where they are landing. Um, pretty much on target. You can see Oscar's numbers, and I'm not gonna read them all. Dear Hill, on what we've budgeted, what we've expended, what we've encumbered and what the balances are. Um, and actual, and actually, how many FTEs are in each building? So you can see, um, Oscar and Dear Hill, the end of middle school are pretty close. Um, and FTEs, high school is a little bit higher, but also high school houses, all the custodians in that number. And then we, the circuit breaker, um, the circuit breaker we received was seven hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six. So it was, we carry this total, and total. we carry this total amount over into this year's budget and it was kind of a budget building. And that was based on 75% of the reimbursement rate. Circuit breaker funding expected to receive FY '23 being a lot of $627,000 and that will be rolled over in FY '24. There has been an update to that since October, which I'll update in the following month, but it's definitely a significant increase to the 627,000, which is good. Circuit breaker, for those who don't know, is a state program providing school districts with members. Some of the costs occurred for providing free and public educations to students with special needs. And this is just a chart of what a circuit breaker use would look like in the last several years and the amounts that we're getting. I mean, so the numbers are growing. Obviously, the number of students have grown, also the number of the amount of reimbursement has grown. Stay, stay at 75% reimbursement rate. Some of the changes are, I know, special education department's been working really hard with Department of Ed to claim every every minute of teaching or dollars they've spent and services that's given. So kudos to them. That's also part of the reason that's increasing because we're claiming more. Capital Life Link for current year is pretty much completed in every area. The only thing left for this year is, I know Dear Hill is in the process of ordering their student teacher desk. She's just trying to figure out exactly what consensus is and what the teachers would like to see. We'll talk more about this at the end of my presentation, but here's a draft of the capital. Raw draft. A lot of things have been carried from year to year. Right now, we're at 1.8. I'm not going to go for every item because I'll go through it more in detail. And then we have our grants. Again, we have our SR grant, which is the last year, which is just about expended. And then we have our school improvement grants, our special education grants, I titled five. Ten one, I apologize. And then I'm at go grant. So you can see the total amount of grants is about 1.185. And we have about 679,000 remaining in our grants. And again, our grants fund about 12.350 additional staff. Revolving accounts. No areas, you know, of concern. Obviously, we continue to bring in revenue in most of our accounts involving the one again that's, you see school athletic revolving is down to about 118,000. So he's definitely been spending that number down. The other one that is an area of concern is the school facilities. That deficit is growing. We're now at a deficit of 9,157,000. And then you can see the other accounts of this here. School lunch program was another one that was really high. It's down to about 283,000, down from like four or 500,000. A good part of that is the whole new serving line upstairs, the high school kitchen, which will happen. So, and the revolving also helps support salaries of about 25.5 personnel.
And Ms. Owen, does that use of facilities revolving, does that reflect the, yet, does it ever let the increased fees?
No. And there's a piece I want to add to that, but I'll address that at the end of the presentation. And then again, just trying to get some information on, you know, how DSE categorizes things. And I, so you have your regular education, your special education, and, you know, our head counts on FTEs. And it's broken down by administrators, building administrators, teachers. Pretty much every category of the DSE wants us to separate out psychology therapy. So you can see where our numbers are. Obviously, greatest number on here is we have 81 classroom, regular classroom teachers, which would obviously be a bigger, bigger number. Down below here is just giving you an idea of what regular education salaries versus the special education salaries. And then the distributed rich aren't categorized either. And then we're getting to our utilities. So utilities, remember, we're one behind in the bills. So for the month of September, this is what they look like. Last year, we were at 87,000. This year, we're at 98. So obviously, kilowatts costs are higher, but when you look at the usage, our usage is lower. That's obviously inflation and the cost of everything has gone up. Yes, similar. We're at 2 million last year. At this time, we're at 2.4 this year. In this case, our terms are up. We had 1,920 terms last year at this time, and this year we've used 2,263. So correlates with the price going up. And again, here's our FTEs of what make up the grants. Personnel, so you can see MECO, we find two, two staff members. This 3240 grant, we found, we find 3.4 members out of that, that grant, and so on. You can see how many, how many staff funded by each group. And the same with the revolving. So you can see, you know, early childhood program is 1.8. Kindergarten, we find six, six. We have 12 teachers and 12 aides, but funded half to the six. Yeah, for T O, we have 13 transportation revolving. It's 4.7, which is half because we have 11. And then just final, you know, update on food service, the middle high school serving lines, we deliver on the 7/23. Basically, installation will happen that day. It's just a one-day project. And then facilities will come in over the holiday break. And, you know, the electrical will hopefully hook up. So maybe soon it's come back in January. Hopefully, they have a nice new serving line and a snack room. I mean, all kinds of new offerings. And then in transportation, we're in the process right now. We're in the process right now of completing a new lease, a lease is up. We've extended it by one year. It ends in June. We have eight buses currently. We need eight new buses. The current lease, three buses, is right now about $139,000 over the course of four years. The new lease will be for the same number of buses over the course of four years, and it's gone up to 151,331. We're still working on the details of signing, but that will probably happen next week. We have to complete that lease in order for them to build those buses and have them towards July 1st. Those eight buses do not include the one electric bus. One electric bus should be the ninth, ninth bus. I don't know if there's any questions on that. It's pretty steady right now. Nothing, nothing to report, concerns about.
Ask a question in the transportation category?
Sure.
I think the alternative energy committee connected us with the vendor. Did anybody?
We haven't.
Great. Great. Because I didn't respond. I just want to make sure somebody.
Actually, I think time, time is going to join us.
Great, great.
I do have a comment about transportation?
Okay.
Thank you. This is Megan Berry and Julie Lively. Thank you so much for the updates with Stop Finder app. Seeing the bus on the map has been a game changer, especially with the inconsistent bus type. I had not previously set up geofences because I assumed it was not running, but they also are a very helpful tool on the app. Thank you to everyone who helped get this app up and running.
Well, thank you. We didn't know it wasn't working. We didn't know it wasn't working. So that's great. We're, we're learning. We're also learning that when there's a bus down, so bus three is not working, so bus eight is driving, you can't follow it because the GPS is still in the cloud of my bus three. So we're seeing if we can swap out a little GPS.
Yeah, how's it connected?
It, it plugs in to the diagnostic, diagnostic system of bus. So what we're trying to figure out is Ray's going to, Ray's going to take it out of one bus and put it in another and then see does it fall? I think it should, but.
That's a lot, though, on top of all.
Anyone could do a rig.
I know, but it's something, I mean, I, I don't agree with those situations. It's difficult to manage that. I don't know. Never mind. It's not the appropriate time. We have, can we have transferred?
So that's the end of the, the monthly report. I do want to look at capital. Have we put together? Very preliminary, like I said. There is up on the screen. So you can see first draft, asphalt road between Dear Hill and Osgood has been on that list for several years. Asphalt road from Palm Street. We surfaced, we know that, extended sidewalks, Palm Street. You can see our bus lease for the eight diesel here is usually it's, we're, it's been $90,000. I've increased to 100,000 because the cost of the lease has gone up, 14,000 or 15,000. And then you'll see, right below is the one electric bus, the $25,000.
So should, should that the diesel bus, should there be 151,000? Would you need your other report?
So what, what happens, Lance, is capital is funded $90,000 the last, I don't know, since I've been here and before. And then the school budget absorbs the difference. So the school budget pays about 51,000.
Capital's not paid.
Capital doesn't pay for the whole thing.
Wow.
Should we ask for it, though? Like, why not?
Yeah.
Since Paul Perry is not here, I'm going to say.
It's totally up to you. I can definitely increase it to be the total.
Go big or go home. I mean, they're going to say no, but like, might as well ask.
They say no, I'd like to come with an explanation as to justification as to why 90 and not 95 or 100.
Right. Yeah. I don't, I don't know how that number came about.
You were just trying to keep it consistent.
From the past, I don't know how the decision was made to be.
Let's be audacious.
Okay.
There, be big.
Well, ask for more. And again, like I said, the, the electric buses there. So hopefully, capital will fund that. That will be our ninth bus. We're hoping to add another route. Because some of our elementary buses are pretty full. And then the hope is not to run out of bus drivers when they call in. You've got someone training, but what will have, what will happen is it will alleviate some of that, the timing on when we have to do that. We'll have an extra route. Bus parking lot, need a place to park our buses. As Craig said, we're paying, we're paying a community member to park in his private lot. Not ideal. Install smart projectors. So we met with technology and Lisa Ren. And smart projectors are needed pretty much middle, high school, in elementary, but the high things at the middle school. So we're going to phase that in. We thought it was, you know, try to be conservative and not put all three schools in at once. Plus, the installation wouldn't all happen in one year anyways. So middle school is the primary one right now in 155. And then the standard replacement for notebooks. The other, the other item that came through from capital, from technology, I'm sorry, was the replacement of the iPads at Dear Hill and Osgood, which includes about 253 iPads, new cases, and several charging stations. And again, you know, they're looking at the iPads and life, like the iPads, and they're at the end of life. Dear Hill, last year started retiling some of their hallways and classrooms. So Principal Sullivan is asking to continue that process to complete the school. So 200, hopefully, we cover that as well as the furniture. We asked the capital to phase it in my grade level. So this is definitely another several classrooms at grade level. Athletic director still looking for the new scoreboard. Now that we're going to have a brand new turf and turf and track, we hope to have a new scoreboard. And then Osgood, the Osgood gym, I know we've talked about ballistic, talked about safety shades and all kinds of stuff. But the recommendations from the police and the administration had conversations and they're looking into like the safety ballistic bill. It's, it's more affordable. And they think that will serve, serve the purpose. That way, there's no one wanting to hit a switch to drop shades. It's just the bill is just there. As we know, we tried to put it on town meeting, we can figure the Austrian festival for safety reasons. So that's we've talked about with capital, they, they about see it. What, what they want to do is pay have some engineer first and then come up with what it would actually cost. So the town halls assure us that the engineering study will be covered.
This number is based on our safety assessment we get.
Correct.
It's a generalized amount. Based on the, the.
Based on what you want. This is a high priority. It's the only school that doesn't have a double. Fire on the middle and high school. Nick said they're outdated and it's time to replace. So that's on the list for 100,000. Again, shortage of transportation and getting athletes to their practices and their games.
They had a facility. So you said, Nick, I don't.
So Athletic Director is looking for a mini bus so he can help get some of his teams to their games because there's such a shortage on drivers. And then the Osgood Elementary is the only school that doesn't have a standalone generator that runs some of the schools. We have portable ones, but the idea is that we should just have one standalone that keeps sitting and follows out. And not have to, you know, go the other places, which is and so on, and so on. I mean, definitely preliminary draft. I know they want something drafted by December 1st. So we need to prioritize this at some point.
It's our last meeting before the first.
And I chose a little, little room. I, you know, I can send them this as it is, and then we can send a follow-up of a prior, prioritize. Correct. We know we don't have to listen to March to finalize anything. So I think we have time.
Yeah, last year, capital definitely wanted us to prioritize.
They wanted.
Actually sent us back to prioritize. So just. So let me also share, we did have a subcommittee meeting, we can talk and make up all of these things. So where's the, when?
Any questions from the capital? Maybe missing. It's 1.8 is what we're asking. I mean, last year we got, we asked obviously for much more than what we got. We, we saved 484,000 last year. So just to give you an idea where the number was last year. I'm not so certain that that one's going to be a whole lot different this year.
Questions?
Yeah, well, it's really sort of great to share where we are expected to prioritize these and they want it by December 1st. It's our last meeting for December. It's about nine o'clock at night. I wonder if it makes sense to have everyone, as to not violate open meeting law, sort of write down, like what I did was just sort of like, there's 17 items and just number them using one as the most important. Well, they, we, no, they, they, they did. So they, they did lash, like Dr. Self was correct, like they, they did last year and they asked us to do that. So I, I, I don't remember the timing of that. What I just, what I just interpreted from your comment was that when we sent the list, the initial time, I, I can't remember myself, but I do know that they asked us to prioritize them. I thought that it was after we sent it to them, they sent it back saying, is this the order that you want them in? And we're like, well, no, necessarily.
We hadn't ordered them necessarily.
Right.
And they said order them.
Right.
And we did that.
Right. And then we sent it back. So, I mean, it would be weird to do the same thing over here in other words. It's like you've already done that. So my point is, is why don't we just do it right the first time?
Yeah, I, I think our intent was to have to prioritize it this meeting.
So I don't know that, I mean, I just, I just.
Our lockers on the 27.
In the interest, in the interest of saving time, perhaps we can all rank them, send them to Susan so that we're not deliberating. In the interest, in the interest of saving time, perhaps we can all rank them, send them to Susan so that we're not deliberating. And then, excuse me, Ms. Owen. And Ms. Owen can then look for the common themes and prioritize them in accordance with the, with the committee as best she can. Rather than us having a half hour discussion right now saying, well, I think that that's number five. Well, I think that's number seven.
I, I agree. And I was not intending for us to prioritize them. I wouldn't mind coming back. I understand they were looking for a draft, which we could hold later on. So it worked the budget resources subcommittee. Fight that apple. But I do like your idea and I would, I guess echo that and ask the committee members to, to the extent they're able to submit individually to Ms. Owen their own thoughts on prioritization. And for you to compile and pick up themes and then to the extent you need to consult with budget resources subcommittee for guidance. I think it would be really helpful.
We could, I could say we could probably even convene before December 1st again. Once we get everybody's feedback, why don't we have a quick meeting about it?
Right.
Does the committee have any questions on any particular item that we can clarify?
I just, you know, the walkthroughs on the 22nd. So you and I have talked about the fact that we've done, we've walked through. But I don't know. I guess it's worth seeing like the current state of the way.
There's a, there's a appetite to do the walkthrough. Cause we talked, I mean, we did talk about, should we do it? Should we not? There wasn't anything on hand that they haven't seen, but let's get them in the building and let's not make to do it. So. We're doing that Tuesday. Tuesday at four o'clock.
Mr. Carr, like your idea, I think that we just need to make sure we post that subcommittee meeting.
Yep.
So that if we're obviously extrapolating opinions from the ranking of other members who are violating. That's a great idea though.
You want to zoom and.
Yeah.
Shouldn't take long enough.
Might save us some time now. Yeah.
Good idea. Good idea.
So the idea is send, send information back to Ms. Owen. There'll be a convened budget resources subcommittee meeting, which doesn't have other members join. And we'll, we'll do that there.
Good.
Great.
Two other things. Fees. I know we, we, we talked about facility rental fees and we voted on new hourly rates. And after speaking to basketball and nickel cross, you know, we realized that the hourly rates don't work. For a group that big that was, that's their first season, which is a length of time. So we had we had a seasonal rate, which was $10 per student. So when talking to those groups to try to, you know, compromise and come up with something affordable to them, because when, when we look, when we calculated the numbers based on the hourly, which they've never had to pay, it was gonna increase like basketball, or $16,000, which is certainly not our intent to do. We weren't in it to make that kind of money. So what the recommendation is after talking to the several groups is and they've agreed to it, to, to go back to, I knew hourly rates will stand, I knew custodian rates will stand. We didn't discuss seasonal rates because we didn't, we weren't gonna have them. But the, the idea now is to we're gonna grant file of those groups in this year because they've already collected their fees and it would be, you know, unfortunate to go back to the parents and say you're gonna pay an extra $10 for your child. But back to July 1st, I'd like to reinstate the seasonal fee instead of $10 per child, if you, $20 per student. And that's more manageable for the groups and they, they seem to be okay with that. So I, that probably needs a vote. I don't know if we need to vote that today, but that's, it's not gonna happen till next year. That was kind of the solution. To try and make it, you know, doable for all, all involved.
I, I think that's great. That was one of the things I wanted to make sure of is reach out to the groups, make sure no one was ever impacted with the change of fees.
And they, they were.
And I guess what I would suggest is if you could come to us with a, you know, a formal presentation outlining what those fees are, then we can bring it up to the committee for a vote. The other item I thought, and Dr. Sullivan and I had a conversation with, with town representation in the rec department. We do want to, there, there seems to be some advantage in coordinating fees to make sure that we're able to maximize the use of, of all facilities within the town for students and then they're not to inform children playing other towns' sports. So as you look into reinstating seasonal fees, make sure that if you could coordinate with that, because there seems to be some I don't wanna call it abuse, because I don't think it is, but there is some practice of having a seasonal fee where a field is reserved for an entire period of time and it goes unused from time to time. So just really, because that's the most economic way to do it. And so it's worth just spending a little more brain matter on making sure we've got the optimal fee structure. So we get the optimal use of all our fees.
The other thing we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do is when, when, when we're reserving now, they've gotta give us specific times. They can't just say, I need it from November to March, which is kind of how it's been going. What, what, what we did was we sent out, you know, we sent out an email to, for example, basketball and said, okay, you booked it from November to March. Every, every, every day, 10 hours a day. Do you realize that you're paying a custodian overtime for 10 hours a day, every one of those days, which equals $12,000? So we're waiting for them to come back with response and give us more definitive times. Because it's probably not gonna be a 10 hour day.
Right.
And if they see they have to pay that custodian fee for the 10 hours, they'll probably come back to us with a more exact time of how, how long we're gonna use the fields. So we're definitely gonna try to narrow it down, you know, to not, not take up every day, the whole season. Every hour. So we're definitely working on that as well.
We talked about this one at late as well. And I think that's where the scheduling was and that I think we will relieve that pressure by making these adjustments. This can, this will result. And we also want to coordinate with Rec on the systems we use. We should collaborate on the systems we use for purposes of making sure that we're all on the same page.
Yes.
So we're gonna, we're gonna talk.
It's great.
Correct. Yeah, we're gonna try and get, we use the MyRec for calendar. Recreation uses MyRec, but not for the calendar renting field. So I think there's three fields that they, they rent, have control for renting.
Which they maintain.
Right. And they're maintaining. My suggestion was have them put their field on MyRec and maybe they're all the same. So our calendars mesh.
Well, I'm mindful that the field discussion isn't on our agenda. So I don't wanna get too far into weeds on that. But maybe that could be in connection with the future. Do not want to talk about some of the, some of the rates. We're looking to collaborate.
Correct. The last item, I think, the last item. Last item is, we've got a request from Vince Thornton, president of Class Youth Baseball, Softball Association. Looking for, for some assistance, you know, it's the last 12 months. I think you all got the documentation. They've been pursuing our possibility of repairing the existing field, field, field. They need to pull replacements due this age. We use it. That's where, that's where our team plays.
For a softball.
Oh, yeah. That's where our softball team plays. So what they're asking for is in order to replace the scoreboard, the cost estimate is about $11,740. They're looking for the school to pay for half. Or, I mean, the request for, for 50% for something to help contribute. And we do use it. It's, it's a softball field. So the athletic revolving, like I said, right now has about $118,000 in it, and it's still generating revenue. So I, I, I don't think it's something that we couldn't afford to do. And I think, you know, a good, good faith effort to help support some of the fields that aren't necessarily on our grounds, but we do use.
Do we use it 50% of the time now?
No, please, put it.
That's all. That was my. I said, do we use it 50% of the time? I feel like our contribution should match our usage. That's all. It's just late. I'm just getting ready. Sorry. I honestly, I'm not sure.
It's a good point.
How much you say. I'm, I'm not sure who uses it that much.
I think, I think, here's the way we looked at it. Look, I have always known. So these, this is one of those funny places, right? The field is owned by the town. There's an independent management organization. There's private gifts and things. And there's our population of kids. And so, you know, we're there and there has been, but there's some times when the community also needs our help. And there has been always a strong tradition of the schools when we can, and when we can do it, we step in and need help. And our kids are using these fields. And I think in, in, this is an interesting thought of being able to keep up with our tradition of supporting our town ballistics in, in a way that makes sense for us because our kids are there. And that, and that we can, we have a mechanism to in a thoughtful way for, to do this through the revolving fund. And so we, we thought that this was a probably pretty good idea to entertain, but we needed to this is something that we should all discuss, but we, we felt that this was a, but the amount of use we do it is great. Great point. And at the time, we didn't consider that, but at the time we were thinking of there's multiple parties and then sometimes it takes everybody to get a problem solved. And so that, this was one of those things that we thought probably made a little bit of sense, but we bring it back to the committee.
And when, when it's budget resources subcommittee?
Yes.
Any other comments? Are yours very good?
Yeah, I'm just, we just did this for a Michigan baseball field and it was very sensibly the town contributed as well. So I, I think what you said, Mr. Carr, is absolutely correct. I, I think it's nice if there's this ability to contribute. But I wonder why we'd be twice 50, 50. You just named three basically categories. Why isn't it a third, third and a third? Now, that may be form over substance because it's not a huge ask. It's about just shy of $5,900. So, you know, could we just make it happen? But that million was more expensive than that. So I know that when that happened, Dr. Sullivan and I had to put it down a little bit. But I don't know, in the interest of uniformity, in matter of principle, I, I just, I don't know. I mean, it's town property. So shouldn't they also?
I totally agree. Yeah. I, so I, I focused less on where the funding was coming from and more on should, is this something we should consider? And why we should consider. And so, yeah, I don't, I disagree. There's lots of funding ways to, to handle this. They've asked us for 50% commission, but maybe we should be having a more robust discussion. There's lots of.
So I'll, I'll, I'll make a proposal, yes, for people's consideration. I, I like the, I like the idea of doing it. Not the least of which, we have our softball team playing there. So there is a, we are, we are a user in one of our pictures at the time, but we are a dear user and it would benefit our, our students. But perhaps we do, perhaps it's phrases is we can approve 50% contingent on at least asking the town if they would put in for a third and make it a third, a third, a third. If they won't, then we'll, we'll step up to 50%. But I do think that there is a reasonable, it's a reasonable ask for the town with their field contributing. So we'll see what they, what they say. I think that's a fair way to do it. Cause if we're done with $5,900, maybe it'll be priced a little bit different.
Well, that's what I'm sort of saying, right? I mean, I, I guess it's, you know, it's not a huge amount of money. It probably had a pretty big impact for certain people. So.
Yeah. And it's absolutely not functional.
So I just, I was just making that point, like I said, but it's more substance per. So I don't know. Did we make a motion?
Look into the proportion that we're using it. I don't know. Like guys, our budget's so tight all the time. Spend $6,000 on the scoreboard.
Yeah, what I'm understanding though is we can absorb that for the athletic revolving. This would be athletic spin. So I guess, what do you, what do you thought on impact for our budget? Are we getting anything else?
We're conscious of making sure that folks know that we are looking to collaborate with town, town groups and particularly in areas where, you know, we, we use these, we use this field. We use this, this scoreboard. So it's, I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're not always, we're sometimes, as they perceive, does not cooperating, collaborating. I, I really wanna make sure that what we want to do that.
Well, Mr. Carr, your point is well taken though. And however, I think that overall, our athletic facilities are an embarrassment. And the fact that we have a non-functional scoreboard for our softball team is kind of unacceptable. So.
A hundred percent unacceptable. I don't know if we need to cover 50% of that problem.
Well, that's what I just said first, right? I thought that maybe a third may match its spot where it's $5,900 and we have a team, a high school team that's playing there and they don't have an operating scoreboard, you know? I, I just, I, I just think that, I don't know. I, I, it's a facility issue and that's the same thing with the, with the American field, with the boys' baseball, which still, even after the work that we had done on it, is still to me suboptimal. But I don't know. That's my thought on it. It's.
So, so let's see. Do we have a motion to, do we have a motion? If so, what would it be? Motion to approve, motion to approve conditional on and off of the town?
I'd move to approve a third.
We have a motion to approve one third of the cost sharing.
Thank you guys for.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Motion second. So all in favor? I? All opposed? Alright, so we have approved a third contribution to the, to the scoreboard. That works out. Thank you, Mr. Thornton, for reaching out to us. Hopefully that, that helps. And maybe there's other ways we can help you as the town to, to support that.
That concludes.
That concludes Capital.
Was there, was there another letter in there that we were supposed to? But like an anonymous?
Yeah, I've gotta do other topics.
Oh, okay. Just making sure.
Alright, so then transportation, any updates on transportation?
Transportation. We have a new 7D driver that is driving one of us. To, how to district placement, not district placement. Which is, which is good. We're finally putting that spread again to use. Yes. We have what would have been a contracted service, which would be very expensive. So we have one bus driver who did take the test and failed and is supposedly gonna have a date for another test drive within the week. I heard days, but I'm guessing probably several weeks. It's a surprise. It's surprising. State boys decided to let us take it. But what, what we're also doing is we've got three, three candidates going into training now. They have to put in 40 to 60 hours to pay. One of them has a CDM license already. So she has to spend 40 hours. The other two do not have any technical class or class A license. So they have to put in 60 hours and then again, the other one has to drive. That's gonna be a process, but we're, we're, we're trying to build up our personnel. And we're still looking, we still have ads out there for bus drivers. Hopefully someone swishes in that already has their license. But if not, we're, we're, you know, being proactive and putting three people to training so we can fill all the buses that might have to double up. It's unfortunate and there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing else we can do. There's nothing. I mean, it's happening everywhere.
Yes.
Thank you for the, the update. Service.
Service. I mentioned the new serving line. We're having not really sure what we're on. Food service, subcommittee type meeting on
Nutrition.
Tuesday? Next week.
It's on the 22nd. It's lunch.
Lunch at Deer Hill.
Hearing the results from that. Anything from our school facilities committee? Standing agenda notes. Alright, moving on to agenda item H, reports from school committee, subcommittees and liaisons. I'll just do open for their report.
Yeah, I am actually, lovely experience. Deer Hill School Council recently, and we, as a council, well, because I'm not on the council, but we're on met with Elise Gettens-Carl and talked about how the Deer Hill community, basically reach out and make sure that the, the families in our MECO program are feeling more like a part of the community, how we can make sure that we bridge the gap between school and nighttime activities. Did some nice brainstorming about how to make some changes effective this year. Just to make sure kids and families can access everything that's being offered, whether it's during the school day or in the evening. So nice to do some collaboration.
The category of select board, everything seems to be on track. There's no significant issue that affects us that they're working on now. I do understand the intentions. We're interested in warrant of proceeding nicely. Everything's in order. I do understand the, we're interested in warrant of proceeding nicely, it's in order.
No updates from me. So that goes us into school committee governance. There is one item not reasonably anticipated by me. And then back over to you, Ms. Owen, or Dr. Sullivan.
So the, we, we have a donation that I need, I need to accept. Donate, donationee, donator would like to stay anonymous. So basically this is just, this letter is to thank this company and gentleman very much for donation of eight human scale float workable tables for our STEM lab, which is great because if you went to the STEM lab on, on one of our walkthroughs, they had just tiny little desks. I'll get it around a very small rooms and all they have.
That's who they rise.
They have, so they have work tables and they have the stand-up, stand-up.
To do experiments at a higher level.
Just to read it very kindness and generosity, means so much to both students and teachers, without wonderful people such as this gentleman, these upgrades to classrooms would not be possible. Principal Mills says, well, thank you for your contributions, very much appreciated. We saw them today, so.
Lovely gift. Very, very lovely, very generous.
We have a motion to accept the gift?
We accept.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright. Alright, we don't, I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. And then future agenda items, anything from this meeting that others want to? We talked a little bit about some follow-ups on, on MCAS and a brand new timeline earlier on.
I got some.
There's no question though.
Okay, great.
I love.
Any other future agenda item topics, as always, you can just reach out to me directly, but.
I think just that, follow-up on, you know, maybe, you know, next semester, you know, you know, I don't know, late February, early March, about like, you know, how things have been progressing with any sort of, you know, I guess it sounds like we're going to have a meeting about, at some point about, you know, Dr. Collins and Mr. Wonka and Dr. Sullivan about things that have been done, you know, in response to issues surrounding the MCAS and other, you know, analytics and that maybe we can, after they, they talk about what they're going to do, maybe we have a follow-up next, next year, you know, late, early, late February, early March about, you know, how that's been going.
Yeah, I do, I do like that idea. I don't want to keep the eyes off the ball.
You still have a comment?
Oh, okay.
Is that alright?
Pudgy.
She's going back to the other piece. Kristen Quinn, Chris and I don't have your address, but pop that in, that'd be great. Two something, yeah. Could the boosters help with the scoreboard, a separate fundraising initiative to help with the rest of the costs? Our area business love to help with useful, it's just a thought. Thank you, Kristen, two nineteen Sawyer Street.
Fantastic thought, thank you, Kristen. So, but then we have no reason to move into executive session. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn meeting. So.
Second.
Second, Miss challenge, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, none. Meeting is now officially adjourned, thank you everyone.